All right. Good evening and welcome to Wasika Public School's school board regular meeting. Today is Thursday, February 17th, 2022. It is 5:30 PM and we are in the central building, second floor conference room. And we'll begin tonight's meeting with the pledge of allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Moving on then to recognition of visitors. We have a few people in the audience, but I think that they are all speaking on the agenda. Any emails at all today that you received? Okay. Anyone's watching at home or down the road, please feel free to send a message to wasikadistrict@gmail.com and we'll read your email in a future meeting. Otherwise, the public is welcome to come and attend in person at any time as well. So moving on then, we have a presentation from Mr. Devin Lawrence about the proposed 2023 band trip. So I feel like February is the Lawrence family month since last, last meeting we had Rihanna Lawrence, happy have Devin Lawrence. So welcome. Thank you for being here.
Yeah, now I just need to bring my dog in.
Right.
And there's another one. Well, yeah, I just want to thank you all for letting me come in and speak about this. So I believe has everyone gotten the trip proposal? I feel like this is, well, I feel like, well, we were just here last year giving another presentation on another trip. But so this is part of our, this is now we're back on the cycle of the band choir Spanish trip cycle. And so when I talk with Bob Rogers, we, and I talk with the kids, I said, you know, we kind of had an experience of doing something not normal to what we had. And you know, would you want us to try to explore that kind of option? Or would you want to go back to Disney? And it was pretty unanimous. They wanted to go back to Disney. So they wanted a little bit of redemption from, from 2020. So after talking with Bob Rogers, we kind of laid out this itinerary and proposal, looking comparatively to what we had two years ago. It's actually pretty comparable in price, obviously with a little bit of an increase due to inflation and things like that. But you know, similar kind of an experience to what we were looking at a couple of years ago, obviously going to the theme parks, which is something that the kids always enjoy, doing a parade in one of the theme parks, which will be announced later on. They have to do a lot of scheduling because a lot of other groups come in and do those kinds of things. So they have to manage that a little bit. But and then visiting Universal and Cocoa Beach, which is always a cool opportunity. I know I, when I was student teaching, I went on that Cocoa Beach and that was the, and I was, I think, 22. That was the first time I'd ever seen the ocean. So it gives the kids the opportunity if they haven't, you know, to, to kind of experience those, those kind of firsts. And on this, you'll find the itinerary, so all the different things that we're planning on doing. One kind of cool thing that we're doing that the kids probably would maybe never experience in their life is actually go to a Cirque du Soleil show, which I think would be a really cool opportunity. If you don't know what that is, it kind of combines modern music with modern theatrics, dance, and acrobatics. So it's kind of a cool little experience for them. And then you also find in the trip proposal, the, the cost. And you would look at the land only circ side. That is the cost for this trip. And looking at the quad occupancy, that's what the students would pay for that. And with the added cost of, of the flight package, which should be somewhere in the realm of $550 to $600, which is again comparable to what it was a couple of years ago. So yeah. Any questions?
This packs a lot of stuff into just a few days.
It really does. And the nice thing about this is obviously travel is a really big concern, you know, when talking about finances. Because, you know, as we found out, you know, when you book flights and book these trips and things like that, the whole world has learned about refunds and vouchers and all those kinds of fun things. But speaking with the rep, she told me they've basically figured out every single question you could ever ask, every single scenario. And they've figured out down to a science what to tell families, how to make sure that we can, if in the event, we would need to cancel, or a family would need to cancel, how we can best get them as much money back as possible. And she said she's totally willing to go through all that information with families in like a separate meeting. She'd actually zoom in and give them the whole spiel and send out a video so that if they have any questions, handouts, those kinds of things too. So hopefully cover all of our bases.
It says here, we, there, obviously there's not transportation from the high school to the airport. So do we take school buses then?
Yep. Normally, yep. Yep. We would, we would load a couple of school buses up and drive up there.
Any other questions?
What about instruments?
Yep. Yep. We usually have a trailer crew that will pack all that stuff into a trailer and they'll drive down separately. And our boosters handle some of the costs there with that. So.
You want to go?
We're looking for drivers, you know.
And I assume you're looking, you're planning some fundraiser opportunities and?
Yep. We have our normal, well, we have our normal fundraisers that we do throughout the year and then our fair share, which is essentially students, if they fundraise and they volunteer over the course of the time that they're in school, they can earn credits. And by the time we do trips, those credits get divvied out, you know, depending upon whatever pot of money is available. I think a couple of, or two years ago, it was, I think, $154 a credit or something like that. So depending upon how many credits they got, that was how much money the boosters gave to them to use for their trip.
Okay. All right. Well, if there's no other questions, then this is an action item later on in the agenda. And I'm sure things will go proceed as usual. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for being here. All right then, moving on to our payment of claims. Mr. Shepherd, you had the honor this month of reviewing claims?
I did. The, I would make a motion that we approve the payment of claims for $3,780,902.04 along with a payroll of $824,454.39.
All right. Thank you.
Second.
Pick one, Caitlin. It's, I don't care who it is. First and a second. Any other discussion? All right. Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve consent agenda for tonight's meeting.
Thank you. Thank you. First and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. All right. Moving on then to our information items, and we'll begin with the superintendent report.
Yes. Thank you for the time this evening to share with you what's going on. In some ways in the district, keeping the superintendent report relatively short this evening, because I know we'll want to spend some time talking about facilities here in a few minutes. But I did want to highlight just three areas of our strategic plan we're working on very closely right now, this time of the year, tracking mid-year progress. You recall from our work session earlier this month, looking at how we're doing middle of the year in terms of student progress. The end of the second trimester is coming up very shortly and students will have an opportunity to monitor how they're doing in that regard. Particularly, we're looking this time of the year, students as they prepare to graduate, our seniors, and we're, we're targeting students who potentially have some extra work to do here between now and May to make sure they can, they can complete their senior year. As we work with our area learning center, we work with our counselors and, and staff at the high school. We're looking forward to making sure that every student who has the opportunity gets over the hump between now and the end of the school year to graduate on time. And then as of right now, our students are experiencing the beginning of registration here for next year. They're getting prepared to take their classes for the next year and beyond. One of the things that has been in the, in the registration guide in the past, but not maybe been highlighted as much as we are right now, is the, is the career pathway parts. When you think about the, the career services options, I think it's paged, I'm going to get the wrong page, but it, there's a page in the registration guide that does say, if you want to go into this field, here are some classes you might want to consider. These classes would be something to consider if you want to go into healthcare or agriculture, those options. So I really appreciate the work our high school team has done to help students see their path. So when they graduate high school, they really have options for what comes next. In the area of workforce, you see three contracts on the agenda tonight, which is very exciting as we complete our negotiations. We also have, as I mentioned in the update yesterday, two more groups that have ratified just in the last couple of days. So they'll be on our March agenda. And we're meeting with our last few groups here in the next couple of weeks. And then we have our individual contracts to finish and we'll be, we'll be caught up on our contracts. So I feel very comfortable. As I mentioned yesterday, the highlights in the update, our agreements for our staff are, we're improving our agreements in a fiscally responsible way. And what I really appreciate is when I look at our competitive, comparing districts around us, we're remaining competitive. That's very important. We're also starting to look at staffing for next year. This is the time of the year when we're not only in two school years. That's great. Because opposed to November, when we're thinking about three school years where the audit was done. But now we're finishing up this year, finishing up the revised budget. The negotiations being completed will really help that. And so in March, the finance committee will see our proposed revised budget and we'll come to the board in March for that, which then leads to our staffing for next year. You know, our student enrollment count, as you're watching our monthly updates, are doing exactly what we thought they would do. And so we'll staff accordingly for next year, which means as registrations finish up, we'll work with finding out that, make sure we have the offerings we need for kids. And then where we have to make some adjustments, we will. But that'll be based primarily on the students we have and the needs that they register for. It's not really a budget reduction comment as much as it is, here's the students we have and here's what they're registering for. And we'll staff accordingly based on that. And then the last thing I wanted to highlight on just this evening is community engagement has been a, a real emphasis here as we turn into the, after the first of the year and get into, get into our spring season, the task force, the facilities task force, which you'll hear some of their highlights from our partners from WOLD this evening, did some great work over the past eight to 10 weeks on engaging with our community and what we're hearing about our facilities. And you'll hear their recommendation is to engage the community even more, which, which is what their, our next steps are likely going to be coming out of that conversation. Along those lines, coffee with the superintendents will probably, as they start to pick up this spring, include more conversation about facility needs and include more conversation about career pathways so that we're able to communicate what's happening with our community. And of course, we're having great turnout in our activities and our athletics. Our, our band o Rama on Monday night was a fun event for the students. We have section wrestling happening right now, girls hockey sections were last week, and we move into all the, the playoff time here for our winter sports. And as I found out with my own, my own students, we're getting into registration for spring sports already and activities. So it's, it, but that's a great time for the community to get out and about, see what's happening in Wasika. I would encourage you to come out and see our, our athletes and our, our performers because they're doing some exceptional work. At Rotary today, we heard from two members of our, of our, I'm going to get the name of the rock, the performance choir. They're going to start their, I think it's the State Street Choir. They're going to be competing here in the next few weeks in various places around the state. So best of luck to them. Last thing is mostly more just a note because as committees changed here since the first of the year, I, I don't know that I necessarily got all the calendar updates updated the way I needed them to. So I apologize for that. If I, if, if anyone missed a meeting because of the calendar getting uploaded inappropriately. But you'll notice yesterday I added next week's committees are on the bottom of, on the last paragraph of my update. I'll try to do that now. So that if you happen to say that I, I, I mentioned a committee that you're on, but I don't see an invite for that, hey, what's going on there? Please, please reach out to me so we can get that, get that determined. And we'll go from there. So very good. That's what I had for this evening.
And I just wanted to highlight that the career pathways that you're talking about, so on the website, that would be on the, the high school page and then go to the counseling department.
Registration guide?
Yeah. Yep. So I just want, in case anyone watching at home isn't aware of where that would be. So it's under the counseling department.
Yeah. And I think the counseling, the counselors are spending time in classrooms all, I think last week and this week to help make sure the students know where to find that information.
Yeah, they have, it looks like they have presentations on each grade registration and stuff like that too. So there's lots, lots of good information on there. So.
Correct.
All right. Thank you. Then we'll move on then to our financial and enrollment update from Elizabeth. So are you able to hear us, Elizabeth?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
You can? Perfect. Okay. I am just going to reiterate a lot of what Eric has already said. Just right now, we are in that budget revision time. We've, we've had a nice period going through our current year budgets. And now we're able to use our estimates, take a look at where our enrollment truly has been trending. The, the state aid had not been identified at that time of when we were creating our preliminary budget. And now we are doing a very nice job working through negotiations. So now we're really able to, instead of using estimates, now we're able to use final numbers for a lot of our contract information. So this will just really help us tighten up where we are with our current year budget. So the plan with that would be to bring that information to the finance committee on March 10th, when we meet. And then we will bring the full budget proposal to the full board March 17th. So we're just right around the corner with that and doing a lot of great work. A lot of department heads and principals working through their information, making sure that they're reviewing where they're at and working through updates. I think the only other thing I wanted to mention is we do have a couple of additional opportunities through some federal funding. We will include that with our budget update as well. I'll try to make sure that that narrative is expansive enough to give people information on where we're at, what we have received for federal funding, and where we're going and what our plans are for those dollars. We were working with the admin staff on Monday of just two different opportunities, a summer program being one of them. In addition to the summer program, we already have, looking for ideas on what we can do to enhance what we're already doing and/or offer different opportunities. So we'll work through that. And then working with Jenny Sandbeck on a homeless grant opportunity through the federal government as well, that we'll have some additional time with. The summer one will end at the end of the summer, but the homeless grant will go through 2024. So we've got a little time with that, working on those timelines. If anybody is ever interested, I just want to continue to let people know that we have a lot of great information on our website. If you ever are curious about what does a budget look like, what does a budget document look like, what have our audit statements looked like? If you go to the Wasika Public School website, and then under departments and district office, you can find all of our financial information there. And always, please make sure to reach out to me if anybody has any questions. I'd be very happy to have a conversation with you. That's all I have for this evening. Unless there's any other questions.
Yep. I don't, I don't think we have any questions. Everyone's good. All right. Thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you.
All right. Then moving on then to our next information item, this will be the report from our facilities task force. So Eric, I'll let you kind of lead this.
Thank you. Yes. I'll welcome Paul Aplikowski and Samantha Epping, our partners from WOLD here up to the table to, to join me. And they've had the opportunity to work with us over the last eight to 10 weeks and several years in our relationship with WOLD, of course, but specifically working on the last several months on how we, how we can move forward with our facilities. And if you recall from 2019, 20 task force, there were some recommendations made to consider some improvements to some of our buildings. Then pandemic happened and our task force during 2019, 20 was largely internal. At this point, it was time to engage some community members. So we're able to get a relatively good cross-section of people who are willing to engage with us in the last 10 weeks, talking about what our next steps are. So I'll let them take us through the findings of, of the, of the task force. And our goal really here is to update you, talk about what our next steps will be, and continue the conversation. Yeah.
Thank you very much. I thank you for having us here tonight. We're happy to give you another presentation on facilities updates. As Eric said, the last task force came to some understanding about what should happen, but it really wasn't definitive. And the board, obviously for many reasons, didn't proceed with that. So this group had the benefit of that group's work. So it wasn't quite as wide-ranging of a process as other ones might have been. It was a little bit more focused on the findings of the last task force. That said, however, we did give the group the opportunity to talk about anything that they wanted to talk about. So it was open in, in that regard. If you could go to the next slide. This are, these are the members on the left side. We did have a total of about six meetings. Each one was about hour and a half or two hours. There was a little bit of touring of buildings that also happened and that to get them familiar with that. And then we had a number of people that came to support the group, either giving presentations or some commentary and back and forth discussion on that. They were also part of that. Many of them gave presentations on special topics for the task force, which are shown on the next page here. So we had presentations on capacity enrollment, the financing, your financial consultants came and gave a presentation on that, a little bit on the district strategic plan. We presented the deferred maintenance report again, which with some updates that we had made to it. Early childhood education, the ALC, we talked about indoor and outdoor activity spaces, grade configuration CTE, food service and special education. And then you can see there are the buildings that we toured with them. If you remember, this is a slide actually from the presentation that you got a while back from the last task force. And it really highlighted four key areas of, of interest. Hartley being probably the highest priority of them and addressing the needs of that building. The athletics part, you've done some of that by regrading the field and taking care of some of the uneven grades and things that were a part of that. The, the turf obviously hasn't been done. And then we talked about updated learning environments or 21st century learning environments. If you remember, that group recommended that it's probably not something that would drive a project, that you wouldn't explicitly just renovate to update for that. But when you do update, it would be a good idea to take that into account. And then we've also talked at length with you about the, the deferred maintenance needs across the district. And Hartley is certainly one of the bigger needy buildings in the district. Next slide, please. So we spent a lot of time with the task force on Hartley. If you remember, you've seen these, you've seen most of these diagrams. Some of them have been updated. But we did look at several options with the group of how you could address the needs at Hartley. So let's pause for a second and talk about Hartley. Hartley has a lot of deferred maintenance needs. I think the district has been doing the best. As you know, you've been short of funding for years. You finally have LTFM funding, which helps a bit, but doesn't let you really address all the problems at one time. And I do believe that the administration is looking for some direction about how to invest in Hartley, which is why this is such an important question. Because as you know, it's been recommended by some that you move on from Hartley, that it's not worth investing money in, and it would be better to start over again. In the effort to investigate that, we did look at options for how you might improve Hartley. So this version of it, the diagram shows that you would take the core of the building there that we're showing in purple and maybe open that up and move the media center in there. And then we have additions both on the south, which has additional classroom space, which would allow you to move out of the basement, as well as accommodate the, the enrollment. And then on the north side, we have actually shown taking off part of the north side of the building and adding on a full-size gym and a new office. And then the cafeteria or the current gym cafeteria could be focused on just being a cafeteria. And this option, as I've told the task force, I think we could make Hartley a nice building. I think we could make some nice 21st century space in it. But it does have some, some problems with its bones, if you will. The structural system in there is very low. It was built in a time when schools, a lot of schools across the country were built on a thrifty design model. And there's just some of those things that are hard to overcome. So low ceilings, beams hanging down, and the basic organization of the building are something that you would have to live with, no matter what you did to it. And that was a struggle, I think, for both task force, thinking about that part of it. This option does end up being the least expensive for first costs. So that is, that's a fact. All right. Then the next one, we did look at the option or the idea of building a new Hartley. And one of the things both task force, I think, came to understand is that if you build a new Hartley, the price is really driven mostly on the square footage of the building. And it, it could be on this site or it could be on another site. This diagram is just suggesting that you may be able to build it on the Hartley site, and then you could demolish the existing Hartley building and turn that into most likely some parking and drives and things like that. There has been a lot of concern about this site. There is an old landfill that is south of the building a ways. This mostly misses it, but we have not done extensive investigation to figure out what really is there and what remediation would be necessary. But that would certainly be something that you'd want to take on as part of the project, at least enough to address any concerns that would be associated with that. I mean, this is really what got both of the task forces thinking about, is this the best place to have the building, if you're going to build a new building? Which leads us to the next one. And this is a diagram you haven't seen before. This is a little bit updated with a little bit more thought put into how you would take Hartley and add it on to the WIS site. So again, from the last slide, that if you did a standalone Hartley building, it could be also be on the site and just be disconnected, and it would be a very similar price. By connecting it to WIS, we believe that you can gain some efficiencies of being connected to WIS from both a construction standpoint and an operational standpoint, that you could share resources within the building. So this version in the square footage that's represented here is really trying to leverage a lot of the parking and drop-off areas so that you don't have to totally rebuild those things and you can make them better in this project. It also would leverage the existing kitchen and suggests expanding the cafeteria to accommodate the additional students. So then you don't have to build that piece of infrastructure. It does suggest adding a gym just to help with the capacity of students there. But it doesn't have a new media center. You would leverage the existing media center, which is very generously sized for a school of its size. So there's economies that come about with this version of things. I will say that we have had quite a few conversations with the administration about the programming of this building and how it would work. But that is also a bit of a work in progress yet. Until you get a little bit more serious about moving forward, I think the district probably hasn't made any final decisions about how you would exactly operate it. But there would be assumptions or there's different ways to run it as an elementary and an intermediate school. It could be run as a, a full elementary school where it's more integrated. All of those things would, you'd actually have the option of doing that if you joined them together. It would give you more flexibility that way. And the next slide. So then we wanted to just share with you some of the considerations from the task force. And this is really, these are comments from the second task force here. These are pluses and minuses or pros and cons. So as we said, renovating the existing Hartley would be least expensive first cost. And another important thing to not be underestimated is, as a school district, you're really, your only option to fund these kinds of projects is really a referendum. And I will, I will suggest that the, having less change for your community makes that an easier process. You have less explaining to do to help them support you. However, there are some limitations to that, the low roof structure that we talked about, and some of the daylight, access to daylight will be difficult within that building. And our best estimate to really rejuvenate the old Hartley, so this would be a full kind of tip to tail and match that diagram we talked about, will be up to 80, almost 90% of the replacement cost. So it's, that's where you start to ask yourself whether or not you're throwing good money after bad.
So 90% of replacement cost for a new building or 90% of replacement cost if we added on to WIS?
That's for the WIS. That's for the additional.
It's okay. Thank you.
All right. And then for the relocation to WIS, some of the pros that were discussed are the opportunities to share amenities and staff. One of the other things that has come up is the gym space for the high school. So when you build a new gym, having it at that campus is beneficial for activities there because it would be reasonable to think that the high school could take advantage of that gym space and avoid maybe having to build a high school gym right now. There's not a whole lot of research out there that talks about how grade configurations are positive or negative for kids. They're like K6, K8, K3. The research doesn't really definitively say much about those. What it does say though is that transitions can be harmful to kids. Every time they have to get into a new building with a new staff and build a new culture, there's a little bit of loss to that. So this would give you one less transition in that. The other thing that this could help, help you is improving WIS a little bit along the way. So now that you're focusing your energy on that building, it would give you the chance to do some updates within WIS too. And that is still something to be discussed and decided upon. You could do a little bit or you could do a lot, depending on where you wanted to be cost-wise. And obviously, one of the big parts of this is it would avoid having to do all the deferred minutes at Hartley. And I will say neither task force has figured out what might happen to the old Hartley. There's lots of opinions, but that's something I think that the board would want to take on and figure out what was best for your community to do at that site. There were some cons that were talked about. Obviously, you have, by centralizing, you gain a lot of efficiency, but you also have a lot of people on that site. And there are already some traffic concerns. So what we had suggested is that you would also budget some money to help improve the roads going past the high school, maybe add some turn lanes, maybe improve the, the roads that go to the north too, and provide different options for people. So you would be putting more activity on this site, but I think you could do some things that would at least ease the burden on that a little bit.
Which kind of needs to be eased regardless of if we do anything.
But yeah, it's again, you could think of it as you're economizing. If you put your energy here, you can address some of those things at the same time. On this one is a little bit more expensive in terms of first cost. And obviously, this is more change for the community. You're moving that building and its, its staff and population. So you'd have to explain that and come up with a, a good explanation for your community why that's a good idea for them. All right. Next slide. And then there were, as we talked about, there was a whole, we really did look comprehensively at the district. And so we just picked out some comments. And so we just picked out some comments from the task force that we thought the board would benefit from knowing. Both task force have identified Hartley as being your top priority in terms of big picture things. And Eric and Ben did do some work with the staff there. And I think that, I think I can quote the staff as saying that it's really time for something to happen. And actually, I, I don't want to misstate them, so Eric, correct me if I'm wrong. Do you want to, do you want to convey that? The idea that something needs to happen no matter what it is?
Yeah, that's right. Particularly at the Hartley staff. And I think some of the, some of the, when I went to visit with the Hartley staff, it really was, do you think moving to a centralized building would be a detriment or not? It was a little bit of a hard time to commit for some of the staff because more than anything else, they really, they know something needs to happen. So whatever the board and potentially our community may support is going to be supported by the staff because they know that they're working as hard as they can on a building that right now is kind of running out of time. And so as the last bullet says, you know, they've communicated the urgency of this from their perspective. So they weren't as hard and fast on which of, of the options or what option we could pursue, other than they're hopeful that we continue to talk about what option we're going to move forward with.
Another thing that came out of the community task force is just the continuing perception that Central is an underutilized building. And that's something I think you should continue to work on. How, how and what you do to improve this building is also an open question mark. One of the ideas of if you can get Hartley, whatever you do to Hartley, if you can kind of get that fixed up, it would allow you to target more of your deferred maintenance money to this building. So you could then pick away at this thing, at this building over time. Or you could put some into a referendum too and get a jumpstart on those things. But that's a perception that you'll have to continue to work on. The task force also suggested that if Hartley does move, there should be some sort of a plan for the building in sight. Don't just leave it in limbo. So, and the various options were talked about, including demolition. Land is very inexpensive for a school district to own, so you could just hang on to it. You don't really pay taxes on it, so it's a minimal thing to do. Or maybe there's a community partner that might be interested in it, or maybe you can sell it. Because the building is in need of such great deferred maintenance, it probably is not worth very much money in terms of, it's not going to be a windfall for you to sell it. But if it could have a better life, that might be a good thing for the community. And so it might be something worth trying. If you do decide to pursue more than just the work at Hartley, the group that felt that Central is something that your community could support, depending on the level of improvement that you would do. Another topic that had come up is doing some improvements to CTE area at the high school or career pathways areas at the high school. That obviously got some updating in the referendum. So I think what we're talking about here is some tweaking of that. There's some ideas to better connect the wood shop and metal shop so that they can work a little bit more collaboratively, get better access into the metal shop for materials, and possibly some new equipment that would help modernize the program in there and get them more focused on career education kinds of things. And I guess we kind of covered the Hartley staff thing already. We talked about that. So with that, we'll put it up to questions.
What are the most current or coming quicker than others, maintenance needs of this building? Of Central building?
I wish Colin were here.
He is. Colin, what's the, give me the top two, the top two Cliff Notes version in this building. Big picture deferred maintenance.
It's going to be your parking lots and it's going to be your tuck points.
Oh, yeah.
I'm not sure if that, I can repeat, I don't know if the microphone.
Oh, yeah. Parking lots and tuck pointing, you said?
Parking lots and tuck pointing. Yeah. And mechanical systems and the building control systems here in this building are in need of upkeep like normal, but they're not at concern range like other buildings.
Not in dire need.
Correct.
Were there any concerns from the task force of if we chose to renovate Hartley, what, logistics of doing that while we still have kids in the building? Did that ever come up?
Yeah, we did talk about that a little bit. Without knowing what the project really is, it's hard to fully plan that out. It's not an uncommon problem for schools to have. Generally, you get about two and a half months of construction time. With the kinds of projects that we've done, just, again, we haven't talked to contractors about that. But often, a good strategy is to build the new space that you're going to build because that creates some swing space. And then if you would, if you can tolerate it, doing some work during the school year can be helpful. It helps with pricing and helps keep contractors engaged in the project. Otherwise, you would focus your energy on the summers and try to do that. And I think in this case, you'd probably want to plan two summers of construction if you were going to do it that way. If you were able to accommodate a significant amount of construction during the school year, I think you could probably get through two summers in a school year and be done.
Okay. For reference, junior, senior high was occupied while it was in construction. I believe we moved seventh and eighth grade.
Seventh and eighth.
Into Central for the time.
Yep.
Which allowed that swing space that Paul is talking about.
Right.
To work on different areas.
Be a little bit tougher.
I think it was a challenge if you ask anyone that, that went to school and taught during that time, but I was just curious if that came up during the task force.
It is a factor. I don't think it's anybody's first choice to have that happen, but there are ways to work around it if that's the option you choose.
How much have construction costs gone up in the last couple of years?
In the last couple of years, the average has been about five or six percent. There's some reports that this last year has been eight percent. They're kind of still collecting data on that. But it's an extremely, extremely turbulent time right now. And it's hard, very hard to predict the future.
Okay.
Which is why you said least expensive, most, you put it in those terms instead of actual dollars, so.
Yeah, yeah, we do have estimates. We've attempted, as we always do, we attempt to pad those budgets enough to cover the future. But right now, it's hard, hard, hard to know what the future is. So we've, we've got some numbers that are a little bit big. If the board wants, we can report those or as you move forward, we can tune them up for that current time, but.
But they're probably not going to go down, right?
Well, I've never, I haven't found any contractor or CM that has, is willing to say that. I think that the rate it's accelerating right now, it might a little bit. But it's not, that wouldn't last long, whatever that might be.
Or at least level off a little bit?
Yeah, yeah. It is at an accelerated rate. The, the historical average is about three and a quarter percent over many, many years. And we're at six to eight probably this year. So that's not going to last forever. It'll go back to some other lower number. And it depends on what happens in the next few months. Some of the reports are that materials have actually appreciated by about twenty percent last year. But contractors are absorbing a lot of those costs, so the overall has only been more like the six to eight. And that, to me, is a market that is ripe for some chaos. So we'll have to see what happens.
So how much of the property, there's actual school property there versus city property, the parks and all that stuff?
At Hartley?
At Hartley, yes.
Yep, so you can see the outline there and is that the teal color?
So the hockey rink down there, the ice rink, and that's all school property?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the city owns Tink.
And also the track there, the school owns the track also?
Yes.
At least most of it.
Yep.
Right, right. That little corner down there.
We just ceded like a little bit to help Tink or something.
Yeah, up in the upper, on the, on the screen, the upper left-hand corner.
Part of it was from the housing development down there too that was sold off from the district property.
Gotcha.
So as a, as a, as a boy, my grandma lived in town, so I vividly remember going to the dump with her. We would come down and we would drive along the whole, you know, just a little narrow path along the south side of the baseball field. And there, down in that whole big area, that was the dump. That was the dump. I can still bring our garbage down. So there's, but is there any, is, are there funds, are there cleanup funds available someplace? I mean, we've got a lot of people that are excited about, you know, pollution and all that stuff. Are there funds, are there funds available for that type of work?
There may be some grants. I believe there's still a way that you can access the super fund money, but we haven't investigated that.
Yeah, we have, the, the build new option, which would retire us to go down to that landfill area is quite, well, there's a big gap between that and other options in terms of cost. So both task forces really have moved off that idea because of the cost factor. So we would have to do some soil sampling, but what we know where the old landfill was to renovate Hartley, we shouldn't get into too much of that.
So today, today, who maintains that hole? The school district maintained that hole, all the grass and everything down there? And do we do that? Is that our, is that our job?
Yes.
School district, okay, so.
So has it ever been looked at to switch this Central immediate with Hartley? Because you're third, three grades versus four grades.
Well, keep in mind right now, we're not, it's not a capacity issue.
Right.
It's a, it's a renovation deferred maintenance at Hartley issue.
Okay, that, that does make sense.
And so the Hartley does, Hartley does have more space or as much space, I guess, as WIS in terms of, there's a hundred more students right now at Hartley than.
At Hartley, right, right.
Right, but right now, it's more, it's not so much about enrollment and capacity as it is about the deferred maintenance needs.
So did you get a feel with the task force, because you're, when you're selling the story for remodeling, there's, like you said, there's not a lot of change that'll probably be going on with that site where you're moving the building. Did you get a feel either way that some people wanted a different choice over the other one? Or was it pretty neutral or?
Yeah, interesting. So the first task force, if you remember, really did recommend moving to Hartley or to WIS. The second task force, we had some waning attendance in the end. And so actually, in the pivotal meeting, we had two, two actual task force, remember three maybe? And one was against it just based on cost, that you can, you can fix up the old one and that's, that will do what you need to do. And the other two were in support of moving. So because we had such a small attendance at the end, we chose not to like really drill them down to come up with an answer.
Yeah, but I was going to say, I think ultimately, what we got from the task force was a, a support that there would be something that needs to be done. However, there was some significant anxiety or, or concern about what will the community feel comfortable with supporting right now, given what we have happening in our, in our community. And so that gets us to really the, the last slide of our presentation here, which is next steps. Really, the task force felt like they wanted to share with you, here's what we thought. Here were some of the, the opportunities and challenges that each of these two options would provide. We recommend now that you really engage the community more and get some more feedback from the community, which could be a community survey. It'll be some of these coffee meetings we potentially, but I was just thinking about some ways as a board member, we maybe have some Saturday morning coffee meetings to share some information with individuals and really get some feedback in the next six to eight weeks from our community about which of these options feel the most productive and feel like there's going to support Wasika for the long term. Because I think one thing we have to remember is that the, the least expensive first cost is an absolutely important thing to consider. We also need to make sure we consider what, what do we want in thirty years for our facilities? And so this is a long, these are long lifespan buildings. So one thing that I would ask the board to, to give feedback on this evening, if we can proceed with, is we did budget for a community survey in this fiscal year to be able to reach out to our families and the community, business owners in Wasika with a professional survey organization to be able to find out some of these, some of this feedback. Particularly focused on, if we were to remodel Hartley, how does that feel for you? If we were to move out to the WIS site, how would that feel for you? And also, as Paul was mentioning, we have ranges. Right now, we could look at one of our least expensive options potentially being in the low twenties for millions of dollars up to the mid thirties for millions of dollars, which means, and either of these projects, based on how we chose to expand the project or reduce the project, could fit in one of those ranges. The addition onto, onto WIS has a little bit more of a, you kind of have to do it all at once flavor than remodeling the, the elementary school at Hartley. But I think that's something we want to ask our community. And our survey partners really are, that's what they do, they're professionals. They know how to reach out and, and get feedback from folks. So what I would, what I would ask, we, we move forward with right now is myself and working with, with Wold and working with our company from the Morris Leatherman survey, usually how it works with Elizabeth, start that process in, in, in process, I guess, and then come back at our March third, potentially just me, or if you guys are available, and just kind of share, here's where we are, here's the update. Because the facility committee meeting, facility committee, committee met last week. And one of the things we talked about was, you know, we want to be able to see the survey questions. We want to be able to make sure that the format of how it's being implemented is something that we have other ideas. So I think it's important that the board and the committee gives feedback on that. So I would like to get the ball rolling on that. It's something, like I said, we've already have planned in our budget. And then come back here in a couple of weeks to update the board on how that process could look before we move forward. Because again, I think our goal is to have all this information by, towards the end of the school year, May. And so the board can really make some decisions on, is this something we need to move forward with right now? Is it something we're not going to move forward with right now? And so as Paul referenced, us as administrators can do our work based on what the board feels is the best plan for, for our community. Because if the answer is, we're going to do it at this time, we can proceed. If it's going to be a different time, we can proceed. If it's not at this moment, you know, all those things have their pros and cons, but once we know the answer. And I think this is something that the board, all of you, I would appreciate, I just want to say, I appreciate your continued focus on this. The last twenty months since I've been in this role, it's been a constant conversation. I know it was for at least several years prior to that. And so I, I would like to get to the place where we can, we can make a decision on at least what our next step is, so we can move forward, if that, if that makes sense.
Can I just ask one question with this picture? Where the new build is, where Hartley is, there's the playground in back and then it goes down, doesn't it, down the hill? Is that a lot of backfill that we would have to do? And does that add on to the cost of what we're already looking at for the building? If that makes sense?
Yeah, so a couple sort of, to put this in perspective, we simply took the footprint of another building and put it on there. So we didn't sort all that out. Definitely, yes, you'd have to deal with that part of it. What we actually have done in some other projects is build it more around the existing building. And sometimes you save a part of the old. So the, all of those kinds of things, we would probably figure out in design later on. And we'd be happy to do that. If the, if the board does go down this road, we'd be happy to do more investigation. And you could invest in soil reports and things like that, that would help you with that as well.
Thanks.
Good. I have one more question. Out at the WIS site, what would be the advantage or why would you decide to build a separate building? What would be the reasoning for that?
Instead of adding on? Instead of having an addition?
Right.
Okay.
I think it would be if you prefer to have smaller schools with less kids in them. If you like to keep the age separation that you have now, so that the older kids aren't with the younger kids. I think it might make some of your traffic things a little easier. It depends on if you can get other access into the site. But you could have a whole separate vehicle circulation system for a separate building if you wanted to.
It really comes down to programming and how you'd like to program, program your, your work.
And.
Question on a different topic, but, or different rate. So remodeling Hartley, you pointed out some of the pros and cons. There's structural things that might, are, are challenged versus adding on to WIS. Also, cost difference, do you have a gut feeling for, what's the lifespan on that? Does, is there a significantly longer lifespan that we might have or before we have to do something else adding on versus Hartley? Because partially, yes, there's a less cost for remodel, but is there also less lifespan? I mean, if you look at a cost per year, are they significantly different or not?
That's a good way to put it. I like that cost per year analysis.
Yeah, life cycle cost, I think is the industry term for that. It depends on how far you go. It depends on how far you go. So what Eric had pointed out is if you do reinvest in, in the existing Hartley, you have the option to not spend as much. Where you can save more of what's there. So it, with that caveat a little bit. Um, if you decide to really redo Hartley, which means um everything but the structure. And you redo the roof and you redo the building envelope and you redo the windows, then you're almost to a new building and it'd be close. I'm sure something will happen. There'll be a crack somewhere or something like that that's old. So you, if you invest that much, you're really resetting the clock. What typically happens is you don't go quite that far and there's some old pieces in there. So um, maybe I'll answer it this way so you can make your own judgments. The structure of the building really will last forever, a thousand years if you wanted it to. Um, as long as you protect it from the environment. Mechanical systems last between um fifteen to forty, depending on the pieces, like a boiler is gonna last you thirty-five or forty years likely. Um, air handling units, especially the kind that are in Hartley now, which we would probably redo if we did that. Cause for clearance reasons, those are more like a fifteen year lifespan. Um, so those would be a periodic replacement. Uh, roads depends on the warranty, but you know, fifteen to twenty-five again is a normal roof lifespan. Windows probably are forty or fifty years. So um, any building has some recurring maintenance costs, no matter where they go. Um, and it depends on how much you decide to do that building.
That almost means it's not necessarily clear, cause there's a lot of details that are gonna answer that, that we don't have addressed yet.
There are some oddities to Hartley, I think, that are, you know, we had proposed that you would move out of the basement. But we're not, at least we weren't planning to actually take the basement out.
Mm-hmm.
So that's something that will be a continual sort of thing to deal with.
It'll still get water whether or not we're occupied there.
Yeah.
For the cost, for the cost, you know, seventy-one to eighty percent, eighty-seven percent of replacement cost, that keeps the ceilings where they are.
Yeah.
And so if we were to take the roof off and try to raise those beams or something, then that gets more expensive. So.
Right, and that, doesn't that lead to the, the single room units are still gonna be utilized, not?
Yeah, one of the biggest challenges with a building like that is there's not room for ductwork. And generally, most of our clients prefer centralized mechanical systems. They're easier to maintain, they tend to last longer. Um, but with those low beams, you either have to put ductwork on the roof, which is not good in our environment, causes its own problems. Or you have to do things that are small and distributed, so there's not so much ductwork. So yes, I think you probably would put those systems back in again.
So I think the question here is that we gotta answer is how do we, how do we efficiently deliver education services to our students and to our people in the community? I think that's kinda the bottom line where we're, we're looking at here. And so with this building, or where, where are we going with this? I mean, if we were to remove the, the Hartley building and demolish it and that land could all be put back into private ownership, which is going to create tax base, which, which we desperately need in this, this, this town, you know? So there's just a lot of things. How do we, how do we efficiently deliver education services to our kids, that's in our people? I think that's the bottom line where, where we've gotta, we've gotta look at, you know? Initial cost, you know, I, I, I go down this path every once in a while, initial cost, you gotta look at it. Yeah, it's hard to swallow sometimes, but you know, twenty years down the line, what's it look like twenty years down the line? Is it, is it still, was still, was that the right decision to make? You know, so. So I think that's, I think that's the thing we're gonna look at. How do we, how do we efficiently develop our, you know? Provide services, education services for our kids.
I agree, Charlie. Yeah, and I think we are, because we've been talking about this for so long, we're ready to talk about that. And we're missing one, one piece yet. And that's just the community feedback that we're gonna get in the next two months. And then I think we're in a position to come back here in May or so and work, hash those things out, work through that and really just devise what our next steps of the plan are.
Can I ask question? The last task force, we actually focused on two options. We didn't talk about this one. I mean, is this one like the third option now that you are bringing it up or we will not bring it up to the people?
Well, we did have it as an option. It was just priced so high, we decided not to go there. But unless I'm thinking.
Both task forces is really a limit. We brought it here just for, for, for full transparency, so that you knew it was being discussed. It wasn't thrown off the table. But both task forces really dismissed it as really not a, not a feasible option finance wise.
I don't think, I don't think people were really excited about the prospect of investigating a dump area either. And so I think that was an additional.
And, and we can accomplish what we need to with the remodel or an addition versus this. Yep.
Um, would you be able to share this presentation with the board so that we can review it on our own time?
Yeah, we'll link it to the.
Perfect. Um, and then it, we, the questions for the community survey, we're planning to review those at our March, at our workshop in March. And certainly we can go into more questions on, based on this um presentation as well. So. Um, but if there's anything else that anyone wants to ask right now, please do. Otherwise, we can keep talking outside of the board meeting and then also bring it up at our workshop. So.
Just thank you for helping work with us and we've had such tweaks and curves with this process, so.
Yes. Alright.
My pleasure. Thank you for having us.
Thank you for being here.
Such a hard decision to.
It is. Alright, uh, we will move on then to our committee and board member reports. Does anyone wanna start us off tonight by chance? Or, I mean, I can pick someone, but I feel bad always randomly picking someone. Charlie wants to start, thank you.
We had a policy meeting last week and I think we will be reviewing them policies tonight or approving them. That's so, and that seemed to, that went well. And we've been in negotiation, I don't know how many times I missed the negotiation yesterday, but I did have a little negotiation and we're, it looks like we're looking at a bunch of agreements here tonight. So. So I think the meetings that I've been have been very positive, so.
Yep, I agree. Katie, you wanna go?
I was just able to go to the, um, the finance committee and I kinda came in a little bit later. But um, we kind of talked about how the finances are behind the personnel and the facilities kind of coming down the pike. So they're pretty interwoven right now.
Sounds like it. Yes. Um, I also attended negotiations. Uh, so we have three of our larger uh groups up for ratification tonight, so our approval tonight. So that's exciting to get that done. Two more uh just got ratified, so they'll be ready for our March meeting to approve. And then we met with a couple of our smaller groups um this week and we have, already have a second meeting scheduled for next week. So yeah, negotiations is busy. Um, I had a evaluation committee, uh, ended up just being me and Eric, which is fine, but um, he talked about um his first goal about the vision cards. We saw the progress of that at our last meeting. And then um, one of the other things, one of his other big goals was, is community engagement, which he really felt this facility task force, that's a big part of this community engagement right now. Um, and we talked about different um ways to educate the public about this um facility's question and, and why we're asking, why are we gonna send out the survey and stuff like that? So. Um, oh, and we did have a legislative committee meeting. It was just kind of a brief, um, I think the, the session hadn't even started yet. But I'm looking forward to the next one, cause there's some interesting, interesting bills being uh brought up, which, yeah. It's an interesting time for education right now in, in legislature, so.
There's actually a lot of bills that are really moving out around. So. Um, for me, all I had, all I attended was the finance. And yeah, we, we talked a lot about the contracts that were coming up, that we're looking at tonight and the costs associated with them. And um, and so that's, that's really I got, that's all I have.
Alright.
I was part of finance and policy and legislative and.
Alright, thank you.
Um, I have, actually I have a question for Eric. Um, how's it going with our sub interns? And I think uh the last few days, the last couple of weeks, our need for subs is really kinda somewhat dropped off.
Well, our staff absences have gotten um, have decreased significantly. Yes, people have gotten healthy, we kinda got through that hump of, of January. But uh, it's going well. You know, we have um, two of the three of them are now fully licensed and so they're working every day except Wednesday. Ex- uh, subs, subbing for our, in our buildings. And then our, our third sub, she's subbing as a para. Um, every day she's able right now, well, her license, her license was applied for January twentieth, I think. So she should be seeing that any day now, I think. So it's going well and, and we have, um, we have great people.
Any other committee updates or you're good? Alright. And then Adita?
Uh, my committees were canceled and everything else was covered.
Do you wanna start us off with our recognitions and positive board feedback?
Sure, I, I just have a couple of things. Uh, the conferences at the WIS. I just wanted to say thank you, everybody who participated, it was very well done. You know, there was just, it, it was, it went perfectly for me at least and for my kid. And I really appreciate all the parents who help out and all the teachers, you know, to be available for the, for parents to be there. And then it, there, last weekend we had Wasika Basketball Association Tournament. And again, thank you all, all the volunteers. You know, it was busy day from the morning till the evening I was there. But yeah, it was wonderful. And just thank you for community and association to do something like that for our kids.
Yeah, thank you. Charlie?
I've not had a lot of contact with school the last few weeks, but, but I do really appreciate this uh being able to watch the athletic bands on TV, you know, being part of that uh, or that um.
The streaming service, whatever it is.
Yeah, that streaming service, what, that's kinda nice, you know, just to kinda sit back and, and watch that. So. Yeah, it's um, appreciate that, appreciate that, being available now, so.
It's been a nice addition to sports the last couple of years. Yeah. Whether or not we're in a pandemic, I find it useful, so.
I've been out of commission for the last month cause of work, so.
Okay. Uh, well, I had a couple of things. Um, I wanted to recognize our Wasika alumni Shane Strike. He is a record holder in the, was it the thousand meter or something? Yeah, which is American, uh, United States record holder, which is super cool. Um, and his mustache cracks me up every time I see a picture of him. But, but Shane, I hope you're not, I hope you didn't hear me say that. But congratulations. Uh, certainly Wasika is very proud of our alumni and that's really cool to see that. Um, and then I've been enjoying um all the photos on social media for Hartley's I Love to Read Month and their dress up days. And I love, they, they do this every year and I love that they keep doing it. And my goodness, does anyone know who the gorilla was? I don't know.
So scary.
But I, I've enjoyed the, I've enjoyed the pictures and it's just fun to see how, um, how they make school fun and reading in particular, um, something that kids look forward to, so.
Um, I don't have anything. Uh, well, I, actually I can, every day I go by the um, um the, I can't think of what it's called, um, the crosswalk gentleman?
Yes.
Oh, in front of McDonald's? And how long he's, they stand out there. Same with by your house over there. Um, um, that they stand out there all morning.
In all, in all weather conditions.
In all weather and they're there for like, they're like a half an hour early to make sure that they don't miss anybody. So I thought that was really cool. That's all I got.
Um, I wanna recognize uh Lindsay Kepetsky, who happens to not be here, and J D Delgado, cause they were winners of the Excel Award. So that was very nice to see. Also, the, I believe the gymnastics finished their section meet earlier this week or last week. And they actually were ranked as a top twenty in the state, which is very good. So hats off to Kim and her crew for doing very well there. And uh, somebody else mentioned the Bandaroma that I was, I went to that on Monday and really neat this year, they had all of the band out there, kind of in a circle. And so they got to hear each other and it was a really fun concert that went very well, so.
Um, I was out at the high school a couple of weeks ago and uh I wandered down into the kitchen. And uh, I found Carol Boltman, who's the kitchen manager. And I said, Carol, have you got five minutes to give me a tour? And she probably gave me more like a twenty minute, half hour tour. And it was really, really um eye opening to see I, all that goes on there every day to provide food for the students and the staff. And I think she has eight employees that work with her or something like that. And they were all busy pairing food and she took me back into this great big cooler and um, a freezer and a big dry storage area. And she was telling me all about the um different options at noon that the kids can choose from. And, and it just, I don't know, I just really, I thanked her cause they said it was really good to experience all that, see all that, ask some questions. Um, she had the opportunity to tell me a lot of stuff, so. And then um another day I went to something I've never been to before and um uh Mr. Hopkins and Mr. Phelps out at the high school put on a geography bee. And I had it in the pack. And I thought, you know, I'm, I'm gonna go to this. I'm an old geography teacher from way back. Um, and it was really cool to see uh there were ten uh students that got up on the stage and how they, um, it was, they ran it just like a spelling bee. And um, and they finally got down to um three, they had third place, second place and, and first place. And first place got a small award. So um, I thanked them for doing that. And um, they were both, you could tell that both Mr. Hopkins and Mr. Phelps were really excited about doing this. They were up on the stage. And uh, I think all the seventh and eighth grade kids were in the auditorium to watch. And um, they seemed to um take it in and be interested and, and uh, I, I think it went pretty well. So um, that was cool.
So did you um know all the answers or did you learn something new?
Actually, the first two or three rounds, I knew all the answers.
Nice.
But then Mr. Hopkins said, okay, this is gonna start to get a lot tougher. And then I probably went down to, I knew half the answers. Yeah, it was cool. It was cool.
Yeah, I think that was a new event this year for snow week and I'm sure that they'll continue that. It sounds, that sounds cool.
I might have to take that in.
Then, and then I went over and watched some dodgeball. And I do think we should get a team.
You do have a knife now.
That was, that was cool too.
Sorry, I shouldn't say that. I really hope no one's listening.
I tell you, some of these senior high boys, can they take a rubber ball and throw it? Like a major league pitcher. I mean, I just. I thought to myself, I don't wanna be out there.
They've got the arm sling.
Are you ready to move on into some action items? Okay. Alright, can I get a motion for item A?
I make a motion to approve the acceptance of received gifts and donations.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion?
No, thank you. Wow, very generous.
Alright, well, this is officially a resolution, so we'll do a roll call. Have Caitlin call your name and then just say yes or no.
Adita Mansfield?
Yes.
Charlie Creed?
Yes.
Katie Youngberg?
Yes.
Scott Demel?
Yes.
Grant Shepard?
Yes.
Dave Dunn?
Yes.
And Julie Anderson?
Yes. Alright, motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item B?
I'll make a motion to approve the accounts payable for dental for the month of December for the amount of eleven thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars and six cents.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? Did we have dental included in our accounts payable this month? Awesome. So the, the date's finally worked out. So. Alright, uh, there's no further discussion. I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item C?
I make a motion to approve two thousand twenty-three ban trip proposal.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item D?
I, I make a motion to approve two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-three local seventy working agreement for clerical.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item E?
I make a motion that we approve the local seventy working agreement for custodians for the years of two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Uh, first and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Can I get a motion for item F?
Make a motion for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-three Wasika Education Association Master Agreement.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? Alright, hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Alright, and motion, can I get a motion for item G?
I'll make a motion that we approve the reviewed policies, which are five oh three, five oh four, five oh five, five oh seven, and five oh nine.
A second.
First and a second. Thank you. Uh, any discussion?
I think we did wanna just point out something um that we talked a lot about five oh three with student attendance and how important it is for students to be on, at school. And how much of a priority it is for students to be engaged and, and actively participating in their learning. And you know, the last year and a half have been a little bit challenging in terms of um keeping students accountable for attendance. And some of the truancy um policy that we have maybe used in the past have not been always as, as most, um, as best fit for students. But we're trying to get back to that um as we get through this school year, because we know students learn best when they're, when they're in school.
Yep.
So we just wanted, as we had that policy committee meeting, wanted to just say that as we talk through these, because it's so important that kids are, are in school.
One, that's why it's been our priority to try to keep kids in school these last couple of years as much as we can. And I hundred percent agree, so.
Have they had, and has it been different this last? Have they had, and has it been different this last couple of years to do the truancy or call it out even?
Uh, yes. Essentially, yeah. The courts have been very, very hesitant.
Sure.
To enforce truancy when students are in situations that are really beyond their control in some situations and so it'll be on our, so I don't know that I would question the rationale for it, but it has been challenging to go down the truancy path for students during the pandemic. And, and that does create some bad habits from time to time. And so we're working on resetting that with our, and our students do a great job in Wasika.
Yep.
But this policy only enforces how much of a priority it is for us.
Yep.
I thought of that.
Yeah. Yeah. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. All right. That is the end of our action items. Um, upcoming items and reminders, our next work session is Thursday, March 3rd, 2022. Next regular meeting is Thursday, March 17th, 2022. Uh, this coming Monday, um, February 21st is president's day. So there is no school district wide. And then Monday, the 28th is a professional development day. So students do not report. Um, and then I believe March 7th is a in-service, a teacher work day.
It's the end of the trimester, I think, as it is. So yeah. Got a couple Mondays now in a row with some things going on.
Right. And then I also wanted to acknowledge that this week is para-professional week. So if you see a para, thank them for the work they do. Our district definitely runs more smoothly with them in our buildings. And then next week is Minnesota School Board Member Recognition Week. So I want to thank all of you guys for sitting here at this table. You guys are definitely fun colleagues to work with. So.
Thank you.
And I think that's all. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I move adjourn.
Second.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.